Meeting to order, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward divides with the Nebraska Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Means Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. Participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record. They are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on its agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call and roll.
Welcome.
Present.
Back here. Camera.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Noah.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Hendricks.
Here.
First item this evening is the minutes. Consideration of approval of draft minutes of February 5th, 2019. Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion at second? Is there a discussion? Singing now to address your votes, please by the votes. Next we have the consent agenda, items two through six. Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion at second? Is there a discussion? Singing now to address your votes, please by the votes. Item number seven, this is a public hearing at 7:00 PM. Consideration of tax increment financing application of Barely Legal Distilling LLC. We have with us our TIF attorney Andrew Willis. Would you like to start us off?
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Council members. The project in front of you tonight is, the building's on the corner of Fifth and Bradford. It's Barely Legal Distilling is the applicant in this matter. I would note that the redevelopment plan amendment, this project has been in front of the planning commission and the CRA that both have recommended approval for this project tonight. Looking at the TIF application starting out as this project. I know this was originally submitted about January 11th and then we went back and talked to the redeveloper. We were to really identify the, make sure we were really identifying the eligible costs of this when we talk about the TIF in this project. So then they resubmitted, sent in some more documentation and got to where we are today. So this project consists of, really it'll be the renovation, remodeling and doing some enhancements on that, the building on Fifth and Bradford to have a distillery in the basement, bar, full service bar on the main floor. The key is really, if we look through this, I'm actually going to jump right to the costs. There was, this project was, in the application, they really brought this up as what had happened and the applicant's speech before this, but that the building codes themselves changed this year and added a lot of extra costs into the project. And while that really meets one part of the TIF test, the but-for test, and that really does matter, that all of a sudden, these additional expenses but for, you know, but for TIF, this project can't be completed. And part of that goes into the additional cost that just got added to this project. What we're being very careful about is making sure that the eligible cost that the TIF is actually being used for were all the, were not those minimum code requirements because the legislature just changed the rules, the law that says enhancements above code, those are all eligible costs. And so when you look at the eligible costs that were in the application and put through in the redevelopment agreement, what we really did was we wanted to make sure that everything identified in that list, in those items, was the enhancements above the minimum code, to get the building to minimum code. And so with this list that was submitted, there's about $64,000 of TIF items listed here, eligible costs. With that list, they also submitted a couple of letters, the main one being from their architect. And their architectural letters basically was saying, it says, you know, looking at those costs that were submitted, in the architect's opinion, those are the costs of enhancements that exceed code, so those would be eligible costs. So we were really relying on that, but we did, we did ask them to provide that additional information because on this project with the renovation and that, just the stylist project, we wanted to make sure that all the costs were eligible. So when we look at the costs, it's really, I mean, it's some of your typical architectural engineering fees. Then there's some energy efficiency enhancements, the HVAC and the LED lights and some of these energy pieces that are above code, again, those are, statutorily, those are eligible costs. There's some fire and health and safety items, the fireproofing, and some of these items that are going to enhance the building, again, beyond that minimum requirement. And then some what I've called accessibility enhancements. There's a letter from John Hughes as well, talking about the adding an additional ADA bathroom to this, to the building that's not required by code. And so those costs as well are included in the eligible costs. So that's all laid out in the, in the application, but I want to point out that they did submit that letter from the architect, which I think adds a lot of comfort because ultimately at the end of this project, if this is approved, they'll have to certify all those costs above code and to have the architect saying already, yes, that looks like where we're going to be. That'll be important for the redeveloper at the end of this project. The other thing in the application, since it came up at both planning commission and CRA, they don't want to address is the incremental value. So we've got the estimated completed value of $597,000 for this project. It's currently, the building's currently valued at $223,000. That valuation, the 597, came from the Seward County assessor. They worked with an appraiser that provided that number, again, looking at what were, you know, the plans, what was going to be built and said, okay, based on that, where the county will come out is 597,870. So the question came up several times at both meetings. That seems like a large number for renovation or remodeling. Again, we, that's really the best evidence we could have is the assessor's, the assessor's opinion. Now, we can't, we're not bound to that, the assessor's not bound to that, but the fact that they're, that the appraiser who's working, doing the appraisals for a commercial building said it was 597, we feel like that's a, again, as good evidence as you can possibly get for our projections. So we use that $597,000 number when looking at that.
Andrew Willis?
Yeah.
Just, I think you have to give full disclosure on that. So the assistance that was given to the county assessor was a guy from Des Moines, Iowa.
Bob Eiler from somewhere in Iowa, but my understanding is that's who, that's who does the commercial appraisals for the Seward County.
Which is fine, but in the appraisal, there were no comparables, it's replacement cost. So no comparables to Hat Park Building that just got refinanced and appraised. The Bradford Center, there were no comparables to use to come up with that value.
Yeah, that is correct. It's a replacement cost valuation. That is correct. Project, kind of an anticipated start as soon as possible and finishing up this year. So it'd be a 2019 project, so it would be TIF started next year. Again, in the, in the, in the application, this sort of gives that but-for test. They talk a lot about the additional, additional costs through the new building codes and the additional expenses and the upgrades they're doing on top of that. They have the list of all those costs broken out pretty well, I think. So we take that information, again, feel free to ask any questions or I'll run through all the documents. Take that information from the application, we go to the redevelopment plan amendment, where we amend the actual redevelopment plan to identify this project. So again, this looks very similar to what the plan amendments we see in the past. This project's in the redevelopment area. And so we had, you know, the area's been declared blighted substandard. And again, I guess a question or a comment that came up at the meetings previously, when looking at the blighted substandard definition, we, the area has been, the redevelopment area has been declared blighted and substandard. So that's the, that's sort of the threshold requirement. And then the, any project, any, any property within the redevelopment area is eligible for tax increment financing. So it's not a, it's, in the Supreme Court sense, it's not a parcel-by-parsel look. We don't look for, to check all the blighted substandard boxes on each parcel. We've made that determination on an overall area, so every property is eligible within that redevelopment area. So again, looking at the projects, we laid out the plan amendment. It is really our TIF eligible costs, we broke down into those professional fees, engineering, architecture, some financing costs, there's a piece of demolition, there's some demolition in the renovation, and demolitions and eligible cost. And then the energy, the energy enhancements, the safety fireproofing enhancements above code, and then the accessibility, the additional bathroom accessibility enhancements above code. All those costs are approximated at about, about $62,000. That plus the CRA fee on top of that and the cost of issuance, the TIF request here and the amount that's proposed is $64,000, so that'll be right at that amount, but it'll be, it'll exceed that amount of the $64,000 in TIF. The overall project, in the application, the costs were estimated at about $368,000. That is TIF, some additional funds, I think it was LB840, but then also a piece of that is the equity they're putting in, both equity and then sweat equity, what they've been doing. But again, out of that, out of that 368, it will be $64,000 in TIF on this project. The main thing I guess I'd go through, again, the preliminary site plans are laid out in the plan amendment. You can take a look at that. The statutory elements we have to look at for each project are in exhibit C. Again, nothing, nothing unusual or unexpected here. This is private property, it's owned by, the property is owned by one of the members of the applicant and we'll talk about that more in the redevelopment project, how that plays a little differently. But again, no public acquisition or disposition of property. It's a commercial building that will be used for distillery slash bar, so there's no real, no real population benefit issues to deal with. Land coverage, building, I mean, the footprint is pretty much existing, there's no expansion, so we're meeting the requirements from a land use perspective there. Infrastructure's fully developed around there, so no, no real concerns from a traffic street issue. Again, looking just at the basic, the immediate project and what will happen there. Parking, again, though, this is in, this is in the commercial business district, so there's no actual park, there's no parking requirement, so it meets the minimum parking requirements. There's a small parking lot, about eight stalls on that parcel. And then the owner owns some parking across the street as well. And so, but again, there's no parking requirement, so it meets the, it meets the necessary parking for city code. Again, it's a, it will be occupancy designation, assembly group A2, which has permitted use in the CBD district. No other zoning subdivision, anything expected with this project. Exhibit D to the plan amendment's the cost-benefit analysis that we do for the project. Again, running through the numbers, the current valuation's $223,000. The completed assessed, the projected assessed valuation, based on that, the assessor's projection that came back was $597,870, which is a incremental, an incremental value of $375,000, which is about $6,366,000 in tax increment every year. So over the 15 years, it's $6,300 per year. That will get us to that $64,000 TIF. The, the cost-benefit analysis itself, it looked pretty typical. There was no, no major ta, you know, no major adverse impacts of note, at least noted in here. There's a couple positives that are unusual for this business that I would note. Again, this is, it's a craft distillery slash bar. The applicant speak more to it, but again, there's some studies done that there's, there is a, the market size and the population really can handle and support another, and needs another venue for, you know, lunch slash, you know, food, so that this seems to fill a need there. And also, just the nature of this being a craft distillery, kind of puts the city in a, in a unique place to have this, this triangle of craft, you know, craft alcohol with the brewery, the winery. Winery, is that the right term for it?
Farm winery.
Wine, and then the distillery. And so, again, with that, that being sort of a very hot tourist, tourism's the wrong word, but craft, craft alcohol tourism, it's kind of, it's a nice position and it kind of complements those instead of taking away from them. So it seems to, seems to have some positive impacts there as well, from a, just a general recruiting, general amenities standpoint. The applicant said there's going to be approximately, they anticipate two full-time jobs and some additional part-time jobs in the bar, restaurant part of the building, and then at least one full-time distiller and possibly going into four jobs in that distillery portion. So again, based on that, you know, there's no really anticipated material impact on the school district and student populations because we're not adding residential and just a few jobs. And so with that, it really looks like the, again, for the benefits of this project, outweigh the costs and the cost-benefit analysis. Going on to the redevelopment agreement itself, again, very similar, but I'll point out that a couple of the unique features of this project. Again, I mentioned that the building itself is owned by one of the members of the applicant, the redeveloper, which is Barely Legal Distilling LLC. So what we did in here is made sure, since TIF really relies on the property taxes and running with that land and the building, we've included the owner as part of the redevelopment contract too, so it includes both the entity that will be the distillery slash bar and then the owner, Scott, is it Din? Din Slaggy? Sorry, I should have confirmed that beforehand, I should know that by now. But anyway, so we've included him personally as well as the owner of the building because if something would happen here, it's really those, those requirements running with the land that, that make TIF work. So the effective date on this project, again, this will be built in 2019, so it's an effective date for TIF of January 1, 2020. And the minimum valuation we've set in here is $597,870, as already mentioned. The TIF amount, oh, and then, and section 2.03, just to point out again, we've added section, an additional section, the representations of the owner, just making it very clear that the owner, even though the Barely Legal Distilling is the redeveloper, that the owner understands that this is a obligation running with the property itself. If something were to happen, if that business were to not succeed, that these minimum valuation, the obligation not to sell that to an exempt organization, those typical, typical restrictions still run with the land. So we've added that section to this agreement specifically for the owner. The TIF amount in section, in section 3.03, $64,000. Section 4.03 is the cost certification. Again, that's in all of our agreements, but we've got the architect letter up front that is kind of the preliminary cost certification, but we'll get that final certification at the end. In section four, no, sorry, 5.04, again, added a new section that just talks about the lease between the owner and the redevelopers, since that's a, a unique feature here. The owner must notify the CRA before there's a lease default or before they declare any default in the lease. Doubtful that would happen since they're affiliated parties, but that way at least the CRA is put on notice before something would happen there. And then if, if the owner of the building would terminate that lease, they're the successor in interest under this redevelopment agreement, so again, holding all those obligations. The exhibits, I guess, we'll go back to the exhibits. Kind of run through the numbers we've already seen. They anticipate a tax increment in exhibit B, $6,366 annually in TIF to support that $64,000 TIF indebtedness. Effective year 2020, so the payments start in 2021 and run through 2035. The exhibit C, this lists out the projected TIF sources and uses again, that we've already been through. And that was a quick overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have about the project.
Any questions for Andrew from the council this time? Then all I'll do is I'll open up the public comment portion of the public hearing and then come back to the council if you have any questions at that time. So at this point, does anyone from the council or from the public wish to comment on item number seven? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Danny Peterson, one of the members of the Barely Legal team. And thank you for being here tonight on such a wonderful evening. Just very quickly, Barely Legal Distilling was started, the idea goes back to about 2013 and a lot of thought in how to do something like this, you know. I've traveled around the country looking at lots of distilleries, trying to figure out what's the best, best way to put something like this together. And then 2014, I was building a project out on our family farm by Cordova and the Mother's Day tornado went through and just took it all. So we started over and 2016 decided, well, I'm going to put together a team this time. And so we proceeded to do that and then it was towards the end of 2017, started looking for places to go. And we looked at a lot of different communities around the area, about Lincoln and the east and everything even west, and when it came down to it, I grew up in Cordova, so Seward to me is a place that, you know, seemed like home, home away from home. And the people there were extremely receptive. Jonathan Jank and his crew were exceptional to work with. And having the Bottle Rocket here and Junto and that with these folks too, and felt that that was a really great opportunity to put together kind of a trifecta. So plans were made, we put together our ideas of where we wanted to head and at that point in time, it was no time to get going. Found the building we wanted to use and went to LB840 and got a loan and a grant from that to get everything on the road. And we were doing extremely well until about last June, when we were notified by the Nebraska Board of Engineers and Architects that we were in violation of a regulation or a new building code that was not on the books, at least from a regulatory sense. Because we had gone through the proper building permitting through the city of Seward and met with Ed Gonzalez, and we, so we had taken all the measures that were necessary to comply with local and state building codes at that time. What happened was is that any commercial building that has a basement, the basement is now considered the first floor or a story. So a building like we have, which is what you call a ranch commercial with a basement there is a two-story building now. And call it whatever you want, it's a lot more work now that the architects and engineers have, but it allowed, what it does is it presents the same code requirements on a basement as it does on the main floors. And so if you go down through any of the old downtown areas here or anywhere across the country, most basements are operating under exempt or semi-exempt conditions. And so what this new code is doing is that anytime anybody makes a change in an existing commercial structure, that basement is now going to be subject to be brought up to the same codes as the other stories above. And so we battled for months on that. I met with Governor Ricketts, we tried to do whatever we could to see if there were any mitigating circumstances, but this is a one-size-fits-all. And so whether you're a small business with one floor or a commercial office building with 10 floors, it's the exact same rules and regulations. We made arguments that, you know, hey, this is a different animal. We have concrete floors and even if fire breaks out underneath and we have an alarm system, we can still get the public out safely. And there was no argument about that, it's just that that's not what's in the code, so that's not what you can apply. So taking the next step, we thought, well, here we're going to incur tens of thousands of dollars to address this issue because we have to put in a new fire safety system in the basement. And then you also have to upgrade the electrical, heating and air. I mean, if there's a, they're going to catch you on everything at this point. I don't mean because of anything that's slipped by, it's just that it timed up, timed to update and because of this new code, everything has to be done at once. And so in order to address all these costs, we went back, made a pivot from going from just a small distillery, start a distillery with a tasting room, to switching to a full bar. And part of the reason is this, is we had spent some time here trying to getting to know Seward, but we didn't really understand what was the great opportunities that existed here until later after we began the project and realized that it's an underserved market for food, beverage, especially noon time. And so we decided, you know, we're going to take this rotten situation and we're going to turn this into something. So at that point, we decided to turn the entire upstairs from a tasting room into a complete bar and restaurant with food and to make it a full-service bar, which would play into our distillery as well, because that way people would, whether or not they were after our product or not, would still have someplace they can come in and get whatever beverage they wanted, whether that was a liquor beverage or a pop, tea, whatever. And so we would be able to capture all of those people from that market rather than people who are just wanting to try our own beverage. So in the scope of a business plan, that's even, you know, better than what we started with. The reason we had to go to something like that is because our costs are so inflated because of this code change that we have to figure out a way to spread out those costs. And the only way to do that when you're in this kind of business is essentially have more seats, more customers, more opportunity to cash flow. And so that, that's what we're trying to do here. So that's why we're here before TIF and we're also applying for some assistance through CDBG loans. And we're also going to be looking, you know, for some more investors and trying to put the whole package together. So, you know, tonight, the reason we're here is to try to approve for the TIF portion and then take the next step, try and get approved for the CDBG. And, you know, we're not going to roll with any of this until everything is in place. That would be just a bad business decision, so that's where we're sitting right now. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
You said the fire safety system, is that a sprinkler system they're putting in?
No.
Or is it that to me?
Well, because we're going to be manufacturing on the, in the basement, one of the things that happens in manufacturing is you're constantly moving things. So as, as we grow and expand, we will have to be moving pipes and electrical and other things throughout the basement ceiling. It's a metal truss that allows lots, you can kind of plumb everything through there. So in order to have a fire code, meet the fire code, we have to put in a suspended ceiling. And so with the removable panels, but different from what you normally see, the metal support system has to be fire-rated and then all the panels have to be two layers, five inches drywall. But that allows us to still have accessibility when we need to move and change things. But it's an expensive solution to the problem because if we were to just drywall the ceilings, then we have no access. And so that simply will not work. And so that, that's how we have to address the fire situation. That's, that's what they wanted in lieu of sprinklers or anything.
And so is that included in your, in your kitchen and your restaurant thing as far as?
It's the entire base, yes. It's the entire basement that we have to take care of. They're not worried about anything that's happening on the first floor. They're just worried about what's happening below in an industrial setting. And so this is what tripped the whole project up was because, you know, we had researched all this and I had had the local fire inspector out and he went through this and his office went through it and everybody said, we're fine. They did not know about this code change either. And not that it matters, but I also contacted the head of the Lincoln Building and Safety, Commercial Plan Review and also Grand Island, and at the time, they heard it from me. They did not know either. So since that point in time, dozens, maybe hundreds, I don't remember, but businesses are now being called back because this goes back retroactively to January 1st, 2018. Even if you were finishing a project, you'd started in 2017. If you didn't have your occupancy permit by December 31st of 2017, it now applies to you as well.
So it's occupancy going in and anything?
Right.
So in January is when you hold your initial building permit here locally?
Actually, I think it was March.
And then had you started work up to that point then?
Yeah, yeah.
Just demolition work?
Demolition, and then we had actually done a lot of reconstruction. So, you know, we were well down the path when this notification came to us. So at that point, you know, you've already done so much work that it's like, well, go somewhere else or you continue what you have. And I think it made no sense to us to just take what we already had because we have so much completed. And the building lends itself to what we're trying to do. And it's, I think it's a very good use for that and so that was the direction we decided to go.
Any other questions from the council? Yes, Carl.
So with this project, that change was in
So with this project, that change was in January 2018, so everything was retro back to that. So for that, what was the cost that you were expecting to have for this project before that change came? And what was the inflated cost that that added to your project?
If that had not come along, where were we going to be to be finished?
Well, you said you had started before that.
Right.
And so basically what I'm kind of looking for right here is what was your estimated cost for this project before that actually took place? And what extra cost did that change that you found out added to those costs?
If we'd have done the manufacturing like we were going to do in the basement and our upstairs tasting room, our overall cost is probably going to be in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty thousand total. And that's just a kind of a guesstimate because we never actually got to that point before we had to change gears. The overall cost, and this is another just shot in the dark, but when you take into account the fire protection that we have to put in and the updates to electrical, plumbing and HVAC, were an overall number of over fifty thousand of additional costs that were not contemplated. And so then the rest of the number is us taking this situation from where we were with the distillery and the tasting room to a full three thousand square foot bar, full-service bar restaurant on the main floor. So for an overall cost of what we're doing, it's actually a pretty good number. I've been in the building construction industry for almost thirty years now. And as far as the cost we have associated with getting it to where we need it to be, I think we're in very good, it's an efficient number.
So that number that you're looking to where you need it to be is that, I think it's three hundred and sixty-eight? Three hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred ninety-six?
Yeah, the one sheet I didn't grab, I don't have, so, yeah, that sounds right.
So it's in Exhibit D?
What page are you on your packet?
Uh, page ninety-five of the packet, section two, under sub A. So I guess the one question I have on that is, is we look at, in part of that packet, you guys had the, I don't know, want to call it a business plan or whatever it was, is that you had a hundred and sixty-six thousand in expenses that you had listed out in there. And, but then we get into this number of three hundred and sixty-eight, five ninety-six. Kind of what are the differences between those two numbers, I guess, on where those are coming from?
Well, one of those numbers is the first generation of this plan. And the second, the three seventy-eight or whatever that number is, that's the final full-blown bar on the entire floor. The previous number did not include that. I hope I'm explaining that right, but...
So the overall cost is a three hundred and sixty-eight thousand total? Toward the hundred and sixty-six thousand, that was just those two? We have the TIF expenses and the CRD? I'm terrible with acronyms, the CRDVG or whatever.
Oh, you're looking at a hundred and sixty-six thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the total of the TIF money and the CDBG loan that we're applying for, so that's what that number is.
So how much is the CDBG that you'll be asking for?
One hundred and two thousand.
I guess my question would be, well, he's calculating, would be, you're welcome. How tight is the situation right now where with the LDA forty dollars, the TIF dollars that we're discussing tonight and then the CDBG dollars? I mean, I don't think we've ever had anybody that I can remember apply for all three. And I'm just was wondering, I mean, is the situation that tight where like if one of these pieces doesn't, if one of these pieces were to fall through, that this sends the whole thing into a tailspin? I mean, where are we at as far as your liquidity?
I wouldn't say that that's missing the mark too far, just because of what happened with the state board. There's no reason, no reason complaining about it. It is what it is. I think it's totally unconscionable that they're able to do things like that with the impact that it has on a small business. Because that's the only people it hits. Because if you have a project that's in hundreds of thousands of dollars, you already have architects and engineers involved. And so, you know, that was one of the things we really dug into when we were going through this process. And it was, do we need architects? Do we need engineers? And it was, no, 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 you don't need them. You know, make sure we're under the square footage and all the other requirements. I mean, I've been doing this for thirty years, so never faced anything like this before. And so when this popped its head up, it's like, yeah, no, we were not prepared for that. You know, one of the things that can stop, and think about it, we went to LDA forty to get funding because that's one of those things where, you know, you go to those funds because you can't get funds from a bank situation. Banks don't like to fund distilleries. And it's not because of their immense risk, it's because of their slow rate of return. It's really hard for a bank, an institution, to look at this and say, you know what? Yeah, let's loan this money out and we're not going to collect anything for eighteen months. They just won't do that. It doesn't fit their model. And so, you know, when we came to LDA forty and got that assistance, it was exactly what we needed and everything. I mean, we were bowling along perfectly, no problems at all. And I actually had an outside investor lined up to finish just a little bit of what we were going to do by expanding our tasting room to make it just a little bit nicer. So, you know, up to that point, everything was good. And it doesn't mean that we're not looking right now. I mean, we're still out looking for some additional investors and other ways of addressing this. But, you know, right now, we're here for the TIF money and for the CDBG because we need those funds, of that amount of those funds to finish this.
And forgive my bluntness, it's just, I mean, looking at the risk assessment from the city's perspective, with the LDA forty commitment and here are the TIF, you know, it, I guess, part of me is just somewhat, not against it, but hesitant just because I'm looking at, this is still in the second piece. I mean, there's a third piece yet to come. And if the situation is dire now and is contingent more or less on the third piece also happening, I mean, at what point do you look at the situation and say, this just isn't, the numbers just aren't there? The numbers just don't work?
Well, the thing to remember though is when you look at the numbers, let's say I was developing a brand-new business. This wasn't the circumstances that we are looking at right now, which give it that dire look. If I were coming in saying, here's my business plan for a brand-new business, let's just eliminate the financing component of it. If you look at the projections over the next three years and you look at all of the information that's been put together and all the, where we think we'll be, I don't think you can do any better than that. And given the city that we're in with the underserved markets that we have here, I think it's, you know, I think it's a great business plan. Of course, it's mine, but, you know, and I'm going to say that, but I really think that's the case. And I would hate to not exercise what we feel is something that can be, you know, really good, not only for us, but also for the community. But that's something you have to weigh. And I totally understand where you're coming from.
And I'm not saying I'm against the project at all. I just, I mean, the numbers are the numbers. At some point, I guess I would just, I mean, I, we've looked, the one thing I'm sure, and the only one up here who's heard this before, is people in the community voice, say, we need more restaurants, preferably sit-down style restaurants. And we have looked into it and despite what you might read on Seward community chat, we've not turned away any restaurants or not allowed them to come to town. So far, they just blame the council and not me, so I'm okay with that. But eventually it's going to come back on me. But the reality is that with, you know, when you're looking at those types of, with restaurants, and we do feel there's a need there and we do feel like there is a market there. It's just about, all the franchises that we've looked into, for example, in the past, they always require a certain amount of liquidity. You know, it's not just the investment capital dollars, they also want, and we're not, we're not on big numbers, like half a million, you know, half a million dollars in liquidity or more, more, before they even entertain the franchise. And a lot of times, they want you to have multiple franchises already because that way you can draw upon all those resources as well. So I just, I know it's a really tough business. I'm actually more familiar with this industry than most, given with my background. I just know it's just, it's really tough. I mean, most people who own these types of businesses are there all the time.
Right.
Because they have to be. And so it's a huge commitment. And so I just, that's why I was asking the questions with the finances because I just want to be more comfortable, I guess, knowing that you, that this is where we are and that moving forward, and we know we assume risk. LDA forty, like you said, is a program there that's built on risk. I know on this, particularly with TIF, you know, you have someone here who is understanding that they would be committed to fulfilling the tax obligations moving forward. So the risk in this is actually arguably a lot less than it is in LDA forty because you have the personal, more or less guaranteed, because it's going to follow the property there. But with that said, it's just a lot of, I'm feeling like a bank loan officer, like we're being overextended to some degree.
Well, and I understand what you're saying, and as far as the TIF money goes, I mean, that's an obligation that we feel very seriously about because one of our partners is going to maintain that obligation, whether or not we succeed or not. And so, you know, in the back of your mind, you're thinking, you know, we need to take this very seriously and we have and we are. One of the things in addressing what you're talking about, I know, I have a lot of friends who are in the food and bar industry. And we're trying to do this a little bit differently because of the information that we've been able to get from them, which is, we're bar-first. Our food is going to be very well researched because there are ways of doing food in bars that don't kill you. Because I would not want to be in the pure restaurant business. That is a very, very difficult business to operate in, and you are right. It's not that this is going to be a tremendous different model, but we're not going to do anything that's going to hurt our distillery or our bar because those are big cash generators. And so the food is there as an enticement to get people to come in rather than a reason to get them that we have to walk off.
Are you applying for a C license then?
We have a CK.
Okay, so catering with the C, okay.
And it allows us to have on-sale, off-sale of our own product as well as full service of all other products.
Okay. Did you ask some question?
So I'm in Josh's camp. As far as being, I'm extremely hesitant, hesitant to where I don't know that I'm going to vote in favor of this. And while I work at a bank, I'm not a loan officer, but I'm going to pretend to play loan officer for you. So if somebody comes to the bank and they want a loan, I mean, if I'm starting a new business, the first thing I'm doing is I'm looking for investors so I have some cash. Coming, going to the bank and the bank's going to say, what are you putting into this project? You know, today, what you're telling me you've put into this project, and other than Scott not taking rent, which you could consider real dollars, you've paid some taxes, you've paid for insurance. You're saying you've put fifty-two thousand dollars worth of labor into the project and you're even trying to use mileage as part of your sweat equity, we'll call it, into the project. If I go into a bank and I'm building a new home, they're not going to accept, well, I'll do the painting, I actually know how to do trim work, so I'll do all the trim in the house. I'll lay the sod, I'll put siding on because I can hang siding too. They're not going to accept that as down payment. I need to see where you're putting a risk into this and the city isn't taking on all the risk. LDA forty came with no personal guarantees. So it falls, it fails, it fails. We have nobody to go after to get those dollars back. You know, and so I just don't see it happening. And I asked at the CRA committee meeting, that, you know, you received eighty-five grand. What was it spent on? What did you do with it? Did you hire contractors? Did you, where did the eighty-five grand go? I've got a great layout here and I unfortunately didn't find an LDA forty layout on, here's where we're going to spend that money and this is how it's going to be spent. You've done a great job laying out how you would spend CBG funds, how you would spend TIF funds. I want to know what happened to this eighty-five grand? Where did it go? What's been done, what hasn't been done? I mean, here are your story of all the changes you need to make, but what happened to the eighty-five? I mean, if the eighty-five is what was necessary to get a distillery going, I would hope that all those pieces are in place, are getting ready to go and now you just got to need code to get the other pieces going.
Well, when we had to make our pivot, we put a lot of that money into doing the work that's been done over there. And the only way to be able to tell what that is would be to go take a look. And as far as the rest of the money that's been spent, it's been documented and sent in LDA forty reports. And we will have a more definitive report on the next one coming up, so.
And it was, and I'm going to take you down a path here and I, by no means am trying to paint you into a corner. So you asked for an extension on your LDA forty loan. You provided some information to the city on your current expenditures. And so I met with Greg and we discussed those so I could see what you were spending your monies on. And you've spent between twenty-five and thirty grand to a company called PK Creations. Who's that?
That's my construction company.
That's your construction company? So is that, is that included in your fifty-five later?
No, that's outside of that because I had to hire other people to come in and do a lot of work. Now, I mean, we've put a tremendous amount of effort into this. And I understand banks don't look at sweat equity. It doesn't fit that mark.
Well, Danny, to be honest with you, now that you're talking a bar and doing something beyond just a distillery, banks make loans to bars. Have you tried to go get a loan?
Well, I'm pretty sure with, you can take a look at where we are financially on this right now. So I'm not sure that we would qualify at that point. I mean, we had to go talk to somebody, but...
To me, this is just high-risk. How much taxpayer money are we going to put into it? I guess when you add it all up, it's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money to get a distillery going and a bar. I mean, I guess if I could get taxpayers to pay for me to start a business, great. I would like to, Danny, if I saw some of your own money in here, true your own money in here, I'd be more comfortable.
Because when someone, it's no different than if I hired somebody to do the work. I took time out of everything that I was doing to do that work. So it is real dollars. It's not flying in the sky. It's just banks don't consider it bankable dollars for them. But private investors do.
If we had to liquidate to cover costs of something, you can't liquidate that. There's no equity there. I mean, what equity does your company have right now, true dollars, art dollars?
Very little. And it's tighter than what we've done in the building, which is the same of any asset that you would put money into. It's a matter of what asset you've put the money into and is that an asset that maintains its value over time? Most don't. I'm not arguing with you.
For me, I mean, the rest of the council will notice, they feel, but for me, this is a high-risk item. That's mine.
I have a question and Andrew, you might have to be in here. So if I understand correctly, a TIF project cannot start until TIF funds have been distributed, correct?
Well, a TIF project can start, well, here, hang on.
Let the attorney answer that question.
So like, in my understanding, like until he gets TIF approval, like this project of what he's been doing from March to June and almost done for Fire Marshal Human and said, hold the phone, if I'm understanding this correctly, we now are allowing an applicant to come and apply for TIF when our project was seventy-five percent close to being done?
Two things. General first and then specific. General, the law has actually now changed. There are certain things you can do ahead of time. And that wasn't the case before, but you can do general site preparation, demolition, grading. So that general, like prep work ahead of time, that's just general. Now, this application as presented, and when I looked at it, it was, it became to pivot, right? And so like at that point, the, you know, this TIF project is different because he's now added this new piece of it. It's now, you know, it's now, instead of going with a distillery, it's a distillery plus a full-service bar restaurant on the first floor that wouldn't have been part of that. that wouldn't have been part of that otherwise. So in that sense, that's how I looked at that when I looked at the project, is that that, this project and the cost that will be incurred wouldn't have been the part that was already started or, that would have been, I guess, I'm looking at as a different project.
So the distillery and tasting room that was in the beginning, this is now a different distillery, tasting room, restaurant and...
The addition of the bar wouldn't have happened. If, that was the addition of the bar that, I mean, it was really the code that triggered it. But then, as you mentioned, then they looked at, okay, so now we're going to, what are we gonna add to? We're gonna add this, turn this into a full-service bar. So at that point, you're creating a new project. And again, the but-for test that says, you know, but for the project as designed won't happen without TIF. So, you could presumably have a distillery still being built. It wouldn't be the TIF project or the redevelopment project. It's a little bit of semantics, but I think that's the distinction is that there was a, that pivot really does matter in this case, in this specific case. When I looked at it anyway, that's what I thought.
When did these laws change? Like when did that?
Jan, or July of eighteen was when the legislation went into effect, actually.
So Andrew, did the change in the law somehow, in a chain reaction, require the project to go from a distillery tasting room to an expanded restaurant?
No.
Because my question is, so it'd be noted, hypothetically, what if I started a project that was gonna be a gas station and no car wash? And then some code changed and I decided, well, now I'm gonna add a car wash. So I need more money because now it's gonna be a gas station and a car wash where it wasn't gonna be that before. Well, then all of a sudden, now I want it to be a tanning salon also, you know. How does that technically?
Well, and that's exactly, to me, from a, from just looking at community development law, I think that's, that is the distinction. You now said, okay, I was gonna build a gas station, now I'm gonna build a gas station, car wash, et cetera. And that becomes the new definition of what you're trying to build. So the fact that you were going to build, at least just purely from a community development law, not a policy standpoint or just the legal perspective, that is the difference. And so to say, yeah, the code triggered my change, but once I had to make these code changes, I decided I was gonna add something else, the car wash or the restaurant, that is, I mean, that's the difference of the project. And I think, I think that's the important distinction from a legal perspective.
Well, and the confusing part for me is that it sounds like the addition of the bigger restaurant and the bar, how that's related to the code change is that, oh no, this costs us more money. We need to figure out a way to bring in more money. Where I would think, kind of to what Chris is saying, I would have thought that in the very beginning, the bar, the restaurant would have been part of it because the whole idea would have been to bring as much money in from the beginning, even though you weren't, it wasn't triggered by having to spend more money on the code change.